Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Hugarte?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Student Representative Knowles?
Present.
You have a quorum.
A second.
Approval of the September eighth, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes. New business resolutions, Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-four. Authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet fifteen-hundred LTD four-by-four pickup truck in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars from Alaska Sales and Service of Anchorage introduced by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-five authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Colorado four-by-four pickup truck in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars from Alaska Sales and Service of Anchorage introduced by the city manager. New business other, Action Memorandum twenty twenty-one fifteen, approval of the twenty twenty-one Election Workers and Canvas Board for the Saldana Precinct brought to you by the city clerk. Action Memorandum twenty twenty-one sixteen, amending the November and December twenty twenty-one regular city council meeting, meeting dates brought to you by the city clerk. And informational memorandum twenty twenty-one four, FY twenty-two cycle one mini grant awards brought to you by the mini grant review team, and that is your consent agenda.
Not, not objection but a comment. At a manager, do we try to buy things locally particularly when we're talking about automobiles?
Through the mayor, Mr. Carey, we, for purchase of vehicles, we typically participate in the state's procurement process which is competitive. If we have the ability to buy local at a competitive price, we would certainly want to do that. In this case, I believe we, we use that state procurement process which is open to local as well as statewide bidders.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speaker, Mayor Whitney, both trucks are going to go to the police department. One is the, a new truck for the police chief who has a city vehicle that's a take-home vehicle. So that would be his light-duty truck that he takes home and is able to respond from. The other vehicle will be for the animal control officer. And both of the vehicles that will be cycled out from those two individuals will be reassigned within the city in different departments.
Mayor Whitney, she's transition, she's transitioning to a panelist right now. If you're on a telephone, Ms. Michael, your star six to unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
We, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know what was happening there. So I'm Sarah, I'm with the Saldana Whalers. I just first off want to say that I'm sorry for missing my appointment last time. I, I just had it in my head that it started at seven instead of six, so I'm sorry for wasting your time. So I'm with the Saldana Whalers. We received the thousand-dollar mini grant. Thank you. On February thirteenth and fourteenth, we had the opportunity to host a local wrestling tournament for the Saldana Whalers. We had over a hundred and seventeen registered wrestlers which brought over three hundred people to the peninsula. We had people from across the state, all the way up from Fairbanks coming to wrestle. What we used our grant funds for was for the facility rental fee here at All-American Training Center. We appreciate the grant and during this last year of wrestling season, we really tried hard to focus on keeping our kids engaged, giving them somewhere to go, and focusing on their social and emotional well-being. And so the grant that you guys have given us definitely helped with keeping them going in tournaments and stuff because just with the state, there weren't as many tournaments as there usually are. We have a huge group of parents, kids, and families that volunteer countless amounts of hours and times into our program. We have tons of different people from in our community that aren't even, don't even have kids or grandkids, but love what we're doing for the kids. And that's kind of our main goal is we always just want to do whatever we can to keep our kids healthy, engaged in something that's productive and just helping them be better citizens of our community. So thank you for that.
Any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Michael, for the presentation. Two questions. The first one, the ages of your wrestlers and in the Saldana Whalers Wrestling Club, how many members do you have?
So our wrestlers are, they have to be turning five within the calendar year, and then they can go all the way up until we have an open division, which is, I mean, even adults can wrestle, but typically we have five that calendar year, all the way to seventeen or eighteen-year-old is usually our main, main range of kids. And then this last season, we had over a hundred and twenty-five wrestlers registered for the Whalers.
Thank, thank you. That's a lot of wrestlers here.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a granddaughter and a grandson both wrestling on the team.
Yeah, actually, when I seen your name pop up, it, I knew exactly who's, who your granddaughter and grandson are, and we're glad to have them as part of our team.
What did, people that came down from Fairbanks, what did they think of the city and of the facility?
They love the facility. It's, it's pretty top-notch as far as in the wrestling community goes right now. We have had a, a couple of different camps and stuff go on for the, and the Fairbanks people come, and they all love it, and it can, we kind of give them a place to stay here if we can, but a lot of them still rent in the community and go out to eat dinner and stuff, and they all, we don't have any bad reviews.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report, Ms. Michaels. Michael, we appreciate all, everything you do for our youth in our, in our area, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item five, public comments and presentations. Agenda, are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. See no one in the chambers wishing to speak, and looking at the attendees, I see no, oops. I see no hands raised. So moving right along to the next item is Assembly Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the council chambers, and I see no hands raised on the Zoom. So we'll move on to item seven, Administrative Reports. Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission Quarterly Report and City of Saldana FY twenty-one Remote, Remote Sales Tax Administration Summary. And we'll have a report from the administration. Ms. Queen.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I wanted to provide these slides which were put together and presented recently by two of the staff members for the statewide remote sales tax program. So the slides that begin on page seven of the packet are from that quarterly presentation, and they describe the state, the statewide program where we're at in terms of projects they're working on, the different jurisdictions that have signed on to the program. They've got some facts about top sellers statewide as well as revenue for what they're calling the second quarter of calendar year twenty-one. That would be the, the April through June quarter. And there's a lot going on. So the program continues to grow. I wanted to also share in my memo just where we were at in fiscal year in terms of remote sales. So I can tell you the, the revenue that was coming to the city, almost two hundred and eighty thousand, that was from remote sellers that had their goods and services shipped into the city limits over the FY twenty-one. It's about in line with what Melanie and I expected. So when we're budgeting, this is really our first full fiscal year, and we budgeted approximately, I think, two hundred or two hundred and twenty-five thousand as our estimate. So we're right in target, exceeding our estimate, and that's a number that's going to continue to grow in part because they are still bringing more online sellers into the program. So if you flip through the slides from the, the staff, you'll see that they are continuing to add sellers. That's a very labor-intensive effort that they go through, working very closely with the different companies to make sure that the softwares are compliant. And so the graph that's on page two of my memo, which is page six of the packet, let me explain this graph and also apologize for the fact that it has two y-axis. This is a graph that the staff put together, and, and let me talk through it. The blue bars are the taxable sales. The dark blue is taxable, the light blue is exempt. So the blue bars refer to the axis on the left. So you can see, for example, in July, we had a total of nine hundred and fifteen thousand in revenue. And of that, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty was taxable. So that's what this, this graph is showing you every month by month, how much sales there were and how much of it was taxable. And to see that dollar amount, you can refer to the chart or look to the, the axis on the left. There are big jumps in September, December, March, and June, and that's because many of the sellers file quarterly. So that's totally, totally expected. The same thing happens with brick-and-mortar businesses. Some of them have the choice to either file monthly or quarterly. The, the line that is shown in gray, that's the actual tax that was paid in that month to the city. And to see the dollar amounts, you look to the axis on the right. So our highest month was actually, looks like March, during which we had just over thirty thousand dollars came into the city in remote sales tax revenue. Again, I apologize, the graph that was sent to us is a bit confusing, but it relates directly to the numbers that are in the table on, on page five. And you can see the trend is, is slightly upward, and that is in part because more and more of those sellers are, are coming online. If you're interested in kind of who the main sellers into the state are, I thought it was interesting, the list that they provided in their presentation on page twelve, they're showing the top twenty businesses in terms of sales into the state of Alaska, and that gives you a sense of kind of where people are shopping from when they're shipping goods and services into the state. The last thing I'll say is they've, they've got a great website that provides good information for this program statewide. We also have frequent contact with the staff members, and if there's any specific questions, certainly if I'm not able to answer them tonight, I'd be very happy to follow up with, with Melanie, our finance director, and bring back those answers to the council. And at this point, I think that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, so the, these numbers on the page five, or maybe it's the first page of the, yeah, it's the first page, tho, those are real numbers just for the city of Saldana then? For those, the two seventy-nine, five oh two sales tax paid?
Correct. So Councilmember Ruffridge through the mayor, those are real numbers for the city of Saldana revenue over now one full fiscal year. And of the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand that was received in revenue, we did pay from that, the fees that go directly back to the program. So our net revenue for FY twenty-one was just over two hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay. A follow-up if I could?
Go ahead.
So is, is there a, I didn't see in here, is there like an estimate of how much, obviously there's the top sellers, we can see who those are, but I don't know, I imagine there's a lot of niche sort of online shopping, or maybe most of it happens. Is there an estimate of how much that of online sales are being captured, like percentage-wise?
Councilmember Ruffridge through the mayor, I will ask that question and try and get some more information. Early on, before we started this process, there was some general guidance that nationwide you might expect approximately ten percent of your brick-and-mortar sales to be online. And that was kind of a, a number that we used to approximate the revenue that we thought might be out there. This number is far below that. So right now, we're at about three and a half percent. This two hundred and eighty thousand represents about three and a half percent of the city's revenue if you're looking at total online and brick-and-mortar. But I don't know that that means that there's quite a bit of leakage or how to quantify that, but I will reach out to the staff at AML and see if they can help us with that. I do know some of the sellers they register are, are individual companies that they work with, but a lot of the sellers that are registered are represented by firms that represent thousands of businesses. And so I think by working with those companies, we might have a sense of kind of how much of the market is now captured versus how much of it has, has not yet come on board with this program. And I'll be happy to, to try and find more information and get back to you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the item eight on the agenda, public hearings, and we have none this evening scheduled. Item nine is new business ordinances for introduction, and we have none of those this evening either. So we're now down to item ten, mayor and council reports. My report is we issued a proclamation today be for Linda Tannenhill Day on October the first. She's retiring from the, what is it, Home Health and Family Development Agency with the University of Fairbanks Extension after twenty-eight years. So that is being signed today and will be presented to her at later date. And I attended the Chamber of Commerce session this afternoon for candidates' form. It was very informative. I'd like to comment that all the candidates did an excellent job in their presentation and did a, were very, very good. It was very good. Then participated in the nine-eleven march, but I will let Mr. Carey report on that during his comments. So moving right along, we now have a report from the Saldana Airport Commission. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I was unable to attend the airport commission meeting last week, but I did speak with Kyle via email and, because he's out hunting right now. Anyway, the only official action that was taken at the meeting was to combine two lease lots into one. The rest of the meeting was providing updates, status reports on the runway project. It was mentioned that the airport is eligible for thirty-two thousand through the American Rescue Plan, and FAA will be distributing these funds. And then there was an update on delinquent accounts, which there are currently five. So that was from the airport commission meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Next item will be Saldana Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Saldana Chamber Commerce Board Directors met on September twentieth. Couple of the items that we were able to discuss during that meeting included the outdoor dining grant results that we saw here in the city. I'm sure we all saw the email that went out from our, our city administration on, on the outcomes of that. Looking through the photos, it looks like a lot of the restaurants around town have really been able to leverage that to really make some incredible little dining areas outside. So the chamber is going to be working in collaboration with the city to kick off a marketing campaign to really highlight all these new outdoor dining opportunities we have in the city and hopefully get some people out there eating and supporting our local restaurant, the restaurants, because they've definitely been hurting this last year or two. Additionally, there are a number of board members who are coming up on their terms with the Chamber of Commerce, so they're beginning their recruiting process to look for chamber members interested in joining the board. So if you know any local business owners that are members that might be interested, certainly let them know. Also, we have the twenty-sixth annual play auction coming up on October sixteenth. They didn't get to hold it last year, and this year it's going to be held out, the Sterling Community Center, or the theme is Through the Looking Glass. So I, I think that's kind of appropriate with the Alice in Wonderland theme there given the craziness we've all experienced last year or two. Tickets are still available, contact the chamber if you're interested. And then lastly, Sparks Saldana is coming back on November twelfth, and they're bringing the Business Scholarship for Innovative New Businesses with that. And I don't know if you remember that, but that was a, it was a Shark Tank-inspired event where basically people with ideas can come, and there's a panel of local business owners or stakeholders that kind of get to judge them and give them constructive feedback. And it's a really cool event. I, I was glad to be able to participate and see that last time. So we'll, we'll see that support for hopefully some new businesses in our area come through that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Next up is the Kenai River Special Management Area Board Meeting, Mr. Carmichael.
Thanks. After the summer off, we had our first meeting back in pers, actually first meeting back in person in many moons. So that was nice to see some of the people who were, were able to make its faces, but getting moving back forward, everything seems to be moving forward. The D E C, Alaska D E C, provided a report on the clean water. That is still moving through, and final report was probably available in the, in next year. They also this summer did a dissolved metals solids that came up a few years ago as was identified as issues within the Kenai with the zinc and the copper. They surveyed thirteen sites eight times this summer, and that should be available in spring of two thousand twenty-two for, I don't, my mind might be familiar, but even after the water quality issues and all that stuff, those are some, we're trying to identify the sources for those. I'm not exactly sure from where they're coming, where they're coming from. Some summaries have been, or surmise that could be from culverts, could be from runoff, I'm not sure, but copper in the water definitely has an, an extreme effect upon the fish and those type of things. Kenai Beach Analysis continues moving forward this summer with relation to E. coli and those sources to identify and monitor that. They're also starting a program identifying or at least evaluating black waters effects and issues that could exist within the small boat harbors where they have the boats anchored for long periods of time, maybe have livid boards and stuff like that. And actually, gray water versus the black water, which is the black water is the, the stuff you definitely don't want in there. As a matter of terms of moving forward with those things. The State Parks has a regulation packet with amended regulations moving forward for the state to look at. It's a rotational review to look at some of them, and the most prominence that is being reviewed is a new position with relation to anchoring on the river and in terms of allowing people to pull off of an anchor, go to the bathroom, pull off an anchor, do a fish, but at the same token, they're setting a limit as well as a, a allowance, purpose allowance, so that it's, it's set up so that a boat can't sit on anchor, get their limit, go get another batch of people, you know, whether public or private, and come back. So it, it outlines as far as for why, or the reasons they may leave a buoy unattended in the river for up to forty-five minutes. So that's been something that's been the dynamic changes for numbers of years, you know, having seen what happens in some of the rivers in the state as well as Lower Forty-Eight, where they might get boats tied together over and over, and you can barely get up and down the river. So per usual, Alaska's ahead of the game before those type of situations occur, and as best they can address it as, as soon as they mount their head. So, you know, learning from other people's mistakes, so to speak, but trying to head in terms of those. The State Parks has continued to work on negotiation with landowners regarding the Eagle Rock property to expand Eagle Rock's boat launch. You notice when you go between here and Kenai in the summer, there's a lot of parking alongside the road, there's just not enough space. So they had some, they had an appraisal that didn't come in the way they, doing it, so they redo an appraisal again in terms of that. So they're trying to move forward with that to get those cars off the roads and, and expand the, the ability so people to access the river down through there. The other river issue, even though it's a Casill Office, Trujillo's is getting ready to be constructed next year, hopefully with a new design. So there'll be two launches, or three launches on the Casill Office, there's just the one that's way down. So that doesn't necessarily impact the Kenai directly, but it does determine where people may fish or end or have the opportunities. So with the present conditions now, there's a lot of people that don't have motors for their boats and stuff and can't get all the way down. So that'll be an expansion of the, of the availabilities for those type of things. So the Grant Lake Power Project that HEA's been working on has received its federal license, but it has not received, but the final application is still not submitted to DNR through review committee process. So it's caused that FERC regulations and was licensed there, so now it's just on the state to, to work in the other things. Other topics that were coming, coming up and, and have been around is evaluating PFD use on the river and trying to get motivation and/or even a requirement to mandate it. So that's some of the things that'll probably be coming out of the charisma board now that we're back up and running, it takes a meeting or so to get the subcommittees going, but those are moving forward, and away we go.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Carmichael. We'll move on to item eleven on the agenda, city managers' report. Ms. Queen.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. A few items to report. First, a few meetings I attended. We continue to meet with a regional group about vaccine availability, and one of the things that'll be different this fall, Saldana Prep Building will not be available for some of the larger clinics, as you may remember, occurred kind of earlier this, this year and in the spring. And so I've offered the Sports Center to become available if there's a need to coordinate with public health and some of the area agencies to do larger vaccination clinics if and when boosters are more readily available later this fall. So we don't yet have firm plans for that, but we're thinking ahead and wanting to make sure that if, if there's a need for that, that we can have, have a location in the capacity, and I've offered up our meeting rooms. Currently didn't have any conflicts on the dates that they were thinking about. Second item, I was, I received a, a call from United Way of Anchorage. There's some grant funding, it's the Emergency Food and Shelter Program that's allocated to the Kenai Peninsula that for several cycles now, we have missed out on because there is not a local board that is set up to advertise and administer those funds. The deadline was coming up, and they reached out to me because I think the prior point of contacts were either no longer available or no longer able to help fulfill, fulfill that role. And so United Way of Anchorage, Anchorage asked if we could help facilitate this process. It's approximately a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and the deadline was coming up. We do have agencies that are interested in those funds, they have eligible expenses, and they could act quickly. And so we kind of partnered where United Way of Anchorage is going to be the board, they're going to use their board to fulfill that review role. We helped with the advertising to make sure that the ad got in the paper and that the applications could come through. And then we're going to work with them to make sure that this current round of funding gets allocated with the hope that a local board will be stood up in time to do this administration ourselves locally for the, the funding that will be available in the fall. So we're kind of ment, being mentored at this point. We reached out to several of the social service agencies, and they're familiar with this funding, there's interest in getting a local board reestablished. It's not a significant time commitment, it sounds like. And so it's not something that I think the city will be actively involved with moving forward, but we were able to assist with this funding to ensure that it didn't go back and, and, and get lost, that opportunity, as well as kind of getting, getting the gang back together in terms of getting folks together to, to be able to make sure we, our area receives those funds moving forward. Third thing.
the night before from her staff that she would have some availability in her schedule if we were wanting to meet and talk about some City of Saldana projects. Mayor Whitney unfortunately was traveling, but Vice Mayor Parker, as well as Councilmembers Ruffridge and Hutchings were available to meet with the senator and some of our staff at Saldana Creek Park. We shared with her the CARES Act report and thanked her for those relief funds. We also talked a lot about the parks development and kind of the story of that property, as well as our vision and goals for downtown redevelopment in general. And she was very gracious with her time. I think we spent almost two hours talking about Saldana, what's happening, where we hope to be going as a community, some of the partnerships we have. And ultimately, she was supportive of submitting a letter of support for our EDA application when we get that submitted. Hopefully, maybe as early as next week, we hope to have that submitted. Couple other minor things, we're going to be doing hydrant flushing. So the utility department is out, this is this annual maintenance procedure to maintain and improve water quality. So we're running ads on Doggone News, that's going to start on the 27th and go through October 1st. Customers might experience a reduction in pressure lasting up to half an hour, as well as some slight discoloration, and we ask people to just run their cold water until that clears up. And if they have any questions, they can call the utility department at 262-4205. Last item to note, we were contacted by one of the main grocery stores in town, they're having some supply chain issues getting paper bags and they wanted to communicate ahead of time that their supply of paper bags may run out as soon as at the end of this week. This is a familiar issue, unfortunately. The other grocery store had been in contact with us several months ago as they also were experiencing some COVID-related disruptions. And I reassured both of those managers that there's no problem with the city, we're temporarily suspending enforcement of the plastic bag regulations in order to accommodate some of these COVID-related impacts. And they're in good communication with us and I feel comfortable just continuing to work with them until those temporary disruptions can be resolved. So you might get some questions from folks or you might see that at the grocery stores, they're starting to use plastic again. That's something we're aware of and we're in communication and we'll just continue to work with them and communicate until hopefully those things can be resolved. And that concludes my report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor Whitney.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Chilson.
Thank you. I know at some point there was talk of the borough exploring options to track and help enforce tax compliance with short-term rentals. I was just curious if there's been any further updates on that discussion with them?
Councilmember Chilson, through the mayor, I will get some updated information. I'll reach out to the Finance Department and the Planning Department and see if there are any updates. It's not a conversation I've been involved in recently, but I'd be happy to reach out and find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your report. We'll move on to item 12, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the chambers and looking at the Zoom, I see no hands raised. So we will move on to council comments. Ms. Hutchings.
I just wanted to say, it was a great forum today. I listened to Saldana's council, prospective council members, and last week I listened to Kenai's and I think we have better choices. So other than that, I think, I'm hoping people are getting their vaccines. I was notified, another death at the local hospital and they are so full. I had a couple of friends that had scheduled surgeries that they have been pulled back because they're not doing any elective surgeries now. And that's the same for all of the hospitals within the state. So just be safe. Thank you.
Mr. Hugarte.
Nothing today, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chilson.
The only thing I would add is, I don't know if you saw the news, but Saldana Masori was awarded a National Blue Ribbon this last week. And it's just, it's really amazing to be able to see that caliber of school here in our town with the educators that we have there and just fortunate to have them. So congratulations to them. That's all I have.
Ms. Knowles.
I have two things. There's been an issue both nationally and recently locally with kids recording themselves, vandalizing schools and posting them to get views on the internet. There's been a few kids at our school who stole the class simulator baby, which is like a realistic baby doll with sensors and it's very expensive. It's about like $900 to replace it and it was stolen and broken because kids repeatedly stepped on it. There have been clocks that are being stolen from classrooms and soap dispensers that are being ripped off the bathroom walls and stepped on, which is really frustrating. But on a lighter note, we had our tailgate, which went very well. There are food carts and drinks and a band and everyone seemed to really enjoy themselves. Even the teachers who were there to chaperone, which seems like not a lot of fun, seemed that said that they enjoyed themselves and that they'd like to see it again next year. So that was really exciting, being that it was replacing the dance that no one got to experience. So we're glad that had a good turnout.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffridge.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Carey.
One of the often-mentioned realities 20 years ago was what a beautiful, beautiful day September 11th, 2001 was for New York City. This past September 11th for us was a beautiful day here, sunny, and we had our parade of flags in which we spoke loudly of our support of our flag, of our country, of our first responders, our military. It was a small group. We started just outside at the Joel Wilkins plaque and I was very, very pleased and appreciative that the mayor was part of it, walked with us the whole way and read at the park at the Iron Mike statue, the resolution that the council had approved unanimously. It was a good event and, yeah, I just appreciate everyone that supports our flag and our country and our military and all the first responders. One other thing I'd mention, really pleased today, went by Bishop's Attic, we've been closed for three weeks because of a lack of employees. We've hired six new employees this last week. We reopened this Saturday. We were very concerned that we might be closed for a while. And so again, we have a new manager, our previous one retired after many years with us. And it's just really nice that we're going to have that door back open. We've had lots of people coming by asking, are you open? We said, no, no, no. But we're ready and anyway, just a really nice to see a local business that does a lot of support for different people. People may not be aware of it, but part of the mission of Bishop's Attic is to help those coming out of prison, those who have issues with illness or again accidents, those people who need help. They can come into Bishop's Attic and we help many of them. And we, they also just bought a new plot of land to build a new store. And so again, it was just real nice to see it open back up and I thank everyone for their patronage.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'll be brief. Please remind everyone to get out and vote, either vote absentee or vote on election day. And I will not be here at the October 13th council meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Moving on to item 14, executive session, there is no reason for one tonight. Next one is number 15, meeting and announcements. Like Ms. Vice Mayor Parker mentioned, don't forget to vote October the 5th. And as soon as I leave here, I'm going to go celebrate my grandson's 18th birthday. I guess I'm getting pretty old because I can remember when he was no more than about that big. Now he's about six foot two and a couple of hundred pounds. So October 6th, 2021, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30. And October 13th, 2021, City Council meeting at 6:00 PM. Seeing no further business before us, we are adjourned.